Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 25th meeting of the Placerville City Council. Will everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started here. And we will have roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Acuna?
Here.
Councilmember Borelli?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Okay, great, thank you. Moving right along to announcements and presentations to the public. Item 3.1, an election update from the city clerk, Ms. O'Connell.
You're muted.
Sorry about that. I'll never get used to that. Okay, so just a quick elections update. As I said last time, the filing period had gotten extended from August 7th to August 12th, so five calendar days because one incumbent chose not to file. That was Councilmember Acuna. So it extended those five days. There were no other candidates that we received paperwork for. So it's that, those same five people. Incumbent Mayor Saragosa, Mandy Rodriguez, Jackie Noe, Tracy Bunch, and Jackie Yapez. So those are our five qualified candidates for City Council. Nobody filed paperwork for City Treasurer. So I just want to make the announcement that there is still a write-in period for both City Council and City Treasurer. That period will open September 8th and close October 20th. If anyone's interested in being a writing candidate, just contact the city clerk's office. And there is a form to fill out called a Statement of writ, sorry, Statement of Writing Candidacy. And it's just that one form that's required. So there was a 10-day public review period for the candidate's, candidate statements. That period came and went. It closed on August 23rd. And that pretty much sums up the update for where we are right now with elections. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Regina. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item 3.2, Receive and File Update on Public Record Request. And again, this is Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you. So yeah, with the public records request, there are three that are listed, but there are actually two of those are now complete. The one from July 14th, from the California Innocence Project, was responded to yesterday. And we have closed out the August 12th request from the Wapoomnas Tribe. There is an additional one that was received on August 21st that came from an attorney representing Element VII requesting the city's cannabis selection process. So there are two currently in progress. And I will update you again at the next meeting. Do you have any questions on either of those two that are in progress or the ones that we have completed?
No, I do have a question on. I know you had mentioned last time about this going online. Do we have any update on when this stuff might be on, online?
Yeah, the city clerk's website is, city clerk's webpage is updated. It does have a list of staff reports from previous city council meetings, and they're just going to be continuously updated and uploaded with these staff reports.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions? All right, seeing none, I will, I'll open this up for public comment.
Right, public comment is now open for item 3.2. If you're joining by phone, just press star nine to raise your hand. And you'll have three minutes to comment, and I'll remind you when you are down to 30 seconds. All right, we'll take caller 179. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Caller 179?
Let me try this again. Just waiting for them to unmute themselves on their end.
It is difficult for the public to not know anything other than Agenda Item 3.2. If they don't have the agenda, I don't think that should be a requisite. So is this the agenda? Is this public comment on consent calendar on other items? Or is this a public forum, open comment?
No, that's an Item 7. This is Item 3.2, which is Public Record Request.
Brother Michael, and hi, are you all? I'm calling from Marshall Hospital with some pancreatitis. But, but my point is still, I'll wait for Item 7. But not having an agenda, there's, you're still losing some communication, which you're all great at, if they have to have the agenda to know what that item is. So there might be some, some assuagement between me shooting blind and I've called you all 50 times and not knowing if it's public comment. It's just a thought. I'll wait till 7.1, what is it?
7.1.
All right, forgive my lack of omniscience. And God bless you all. Thank you, 7.1.
Thank you.
Take last call for Item 3.2, Public Comment. Okay, I see no further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll move on to Item 3.3, Brief Comments by City Council. And we'll start with Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Nice to still be here in chambers. I just briefly want to thank our folks on the second floor that are involved with our code enforcement. They have been working with the property owner on Spring Street and the hillside, I believe that's three parcels that were massively overgrown and a huge fire hazard to the entire older neighborhood that sat up the hill above them. And through a lot of diligence, that is now a model of what a vacant parcel should look like in Placerville. So it's gone from probably as bad as you can be to just a shining example. And maybe we can find a way to get that to the Fire Safety Council. I know Cleve and I received a number of concerned emails and phone calls on that issue last year, especially, you know, closer to the memory of the Paradise Fire. And it's a classic example of what we weren't going to be able to have anymore. Now it's an example of exactly what we do need. Second thing is just to let everybody know that, appreciate the city managers backing and the mayor's backing. About 10 days ago, when PG&E and the state ran out of electricity, the three of us were actively engaged with PG&E and our state partners to kind of remind them, I guess. What it boiled down to is they had not done this in so many years that they forgot that there was a very specific procedure that had been agreed upon in 2001 that outlined how they went about curtailing load. Very much needed to do that, but what was forgotten in all those years was the method. And unfortunately, what they did was a week ago Friday, is they shut off everything, including places like Marshall Hospital, other Marshall facilities, fire stations, police stations, dispatch centers. They now realize that that was an error, and hopefully we won't go through that again. But it was pretty clear that in a heat wave, there, as one of the ISO officers said, when the sun goes down, generation goes with it. And so just want everybody to know that we are in communication, and I think we did successfully communicate and help everybody remember that there were very clear-cut procedures, and those procedures, if necessary, will be followed in the future. I want to thank your support in helping us get that communicated.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, Mark. Councilmember Borelli?
I don't have anything except that, just to give my utmost thoughts and sympathy for all the folks that are suffering in, again, another wildfire in California. Not a wildfire, there's a lot. And this one, thank God, was not caused by PG&E. It was, you know, it was, but it just shows what we're up against, I think, for our future. So they are requi, Red Cross is asking for donations to help out because this coronavirus is creating a lot of problems, inasmuch as the people now they're having to put them up in hotels.
That's right.
And instead of, you know, in massive, yeah. And the way they're having to, they can't serve them buffet-style, they have to give them individual boxes. So their costs are just phenomenal, so anyway.
It's a good reminder for us, for those that can afford to
Exactly.
To give a few dollars to the Red Cross. Vice Mayor Thomas?
Thank you. I would like to give a huge shout-out, a huge recognition to some of the faith-based ministers, or all of them in our community. I've had the, as well as the recognition to all the individuals that are suffering from all the effects of COVID in our community. The faith base, I've reached out and talked to a few faith-based pastors, and overwhelmingly they are feeling the stress within their congregation of people suffering, whether they're losing, they're falling off the wagon, you know, relapsing either alcohol or drugs, issues being, you know, being stuck at home, you know, things. The challenges that these pastors and pastors are, are dealing with and addressing within their congregation and even the greater community where they're reaching out to is just, they are, they are getting overwhelmed. And the more people I talk to, whether it's mothers staying home with their children, and they have to choose between work and staying home to make sure their children stay on a Zoom call, where the businesses are having to coordinate. And, and I, and I have yet to hear where businesses have said, nope, you're fired. Everybody is working together to do that, but it's a stress on businesses, it's a stress on individual parents because they're actually losing work hours to stay home and manage, help manage their kids. The stress on our community is huge. I spent a little bit of time talking with Don Simone about, about what we can do as a community, and I, and we didn't come up with any solutions. But, but the first step is recognizing that there is a problem and, and maybe putting our heads together and finding out, you know, it's not that we can solve this problem right now, but recognizing what people are going through and acknowledging the stress in our community is, is probably, you know, and it's not that we haven't done that, but to put that out there and make that, bring more awareness to that is important. I have talked to so many mothers, and everywhere I go, I ask them, how's this going? What are you doing with your kids? And the story is the same every time. You know, I'm really glad my employer is working with me. I'm really, I had to, you know, I can't work on Mondays and Thursdays because that's the Zoom meeting with his class or whatever. So I wanted to shout out to, to those that are suffering from it, to those that are, that are helping in the community, whether it's faith-based or in the health department, and those people that are, that are, they're working overtime. And they are stressed to the, up to the, up to the line.
And depressed.
And, and depressed. And, and between suicidal, you know, drug dependencies and all these issues, it is significant impact to our community. And the role that's coming out of this is going to be difficult too, because once COVID's over, all these things just don't stop. And the longer this goes, the worse it's going to get. I'm not trying to make any comments about COVID and whether it's a conspiracy or not or want to change that. I just want to recognize how, how much it's impacting our community and the faith base, and to have, have a soft heart for these people and, and try and find places that you can help people when you can.
Michael?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes.
I have just a little comment. That Dennis Tuckin reminded me that the arts community, I don't know if you guys are getting their emails, I think you probably are, and they, it's, they've been doing it, I think, on a, either weekly or tw, every two weeks, and they offer a lot of classes online and a lot of programs, visitation to places all over the world. It is kind of a nice break and, you know, and I, I think they're doing their part, and so I will put my thanks in for them and hope they continue to do that. It's really, I think, beneficial to a lot of people.
Oh, that's absolutely. Okay, Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I, I really appreciate Dennis's comments. Those echo with me a lot. I just started homeschooling this last week, and it is really hard on the parents. So, you know, I completely agree and would echo that we just, I can kind of sense the stress just everywhere, and it seems like it's building as this lockdown drags on. And I just, you know, I think just being kind to each other and giving people space to kind of go through this is really important. So thank you, Dennis, for those comments, and, you know, all the people in our community that are working to provide services during this time. It's just such important work that they're doing. For businesses, I wanted to announce that there is a grant available for up to $30,000 from the community foundation for local businesses, and that can be found, information on that can be found at EldoradoCF.org. And the deadline for applications is 5:00 PM on September 3rd. They did a round of funding for small businesses a couple months ago, and I believe that there was quite a bit of funding left over, so I'm not sure if it will be that way again this time, but it seems like if you apply, there is a fairly good chance that you will receive some funding. So I would definitely encourage any businesses that are, you know, in need of funding to look into that. And then I just wanted to echo Councilmember Borelli's comments on fire season. You know, this fire season started earlier than I think anybody hoped for. My deepest gratitude is with all of the firefighters that are risking their lives and, you know, just working really long hours with really limited resources. And my heart's with all the people that are being evacuated right now and losing their homes. You know, this is just a, a good reminder that we all need to be ready. Every time there's a firestorm like this, I always think that it could be Placerville, and we just lucked out this time. So it's just a reminder that we should all be ready and, you know, keep, keep gas in our, our cars and keep our devices charged and sign up for Code Red with the Sheriff's Department and just, you know, have, have some plans in place for this fall. That's all my comments for now. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Actually, on Councilmember Taylor's comment, Cleve, I know you're on the subcommittee for that, the five, I think it's $5 million or however much was allocated for the businesses. Do you know what the criteria is for businesses to apply on those grants?
It generally needs to be, to put it short, unpaid invoices that they have or a control that they've had that are caused by a lack of revenues coming in due to COVID. So it's pretty simple. I know that somebody asked the other day about other auctions and stuff, and there are some, but it should be COVID-related and related to invoices that they cannot pay or difficult time paying due to revenue shortage, whether that paid for. And it can be for things like payroll, taxes, rent, all of those things are eligible items related to their business, so.
Great, so pretty wide parameter.
And those, they're not payback loans, they're just, you know, sisters, aren't they?
These are grants, $30,000, yes.
So up to, right? That's the, the max?
Up to, yeah, the maximum, correct.
Got you. Thank you, Cleve. Thank you, Kara, for reminding us on that. That was good information to get out to everybody. From my end, I just want to echo Councilmember Acuna and give him kudos for, again, stepping up when it comes to PG&E and, and our electricity in Placerville. In this case, it wasn't a PSPS, but it certainly felt like one because, because of the way PG&E instituted that very first blackout in Eldorado County. And I think the education that came out of that, I think, was even helpful for PG&E to dust off the manuals, and we were lucky to not, as far as I know, we didn't get hit again Eldorado County during the rest of the, I think, the next day. And then I think we were able to shed enough electricity on the overall grid where we didn't have more. But it's certainly a reminder of how quickly we can have one of these events hit us, and we know we're in PSPS season as well. So it's, again, it's a good reminder to all of our residents to be prepared in the event that one of these PSPS events comes online again. I want to give a shout-out to Chief Cordero. I mean, it seems, Dennis and I were talking about this earlier, it seems to be the annual fire over at Coon Hollow. And again, that, that was put out quickly, and I think even the tanker guy called in on that one. But, you know, obviously, if that comes up, comes up the hill, it can be devastating to Placerville, so I'm thankful for all the firefighters here, as well as fighting the huge fire out in the Napa-Solano area as well. I had a friend, CCN, who his ranch in Vacaville pretty much burnt, burnt down. It was a beautiful location, tons of community events there, and it's just, you know, just one of those things where they had to save a lot of houses and things in Vacaville. And so the, the ranch was a good fire break for the rest of the city. And, you know, they will rebuild, but it's a good reminder of how quickly something can happen. You don't even think of Vacaville as a place that would be hit with a, a large fire, but, you know, they, they had the same, same result, unfortunately. I have a meeting, and I actually made, wrote in, Mark, on this as well, with AmeriGas. They want to come talk about some sort of propane generation during some of these blackout-type events. I really don't know much about it, but I'm certainly willing to talk to anybody that may have other solutions, whether it's at a residential basis or at a more citywide basis. And so I'm kind of setting up that meeting as we speak. That's it from my end. You know, we're just continuing to work with PG&E as we move forward here. I think there's still a lot of questions as we roll into the PSPS season in regards to Marshall Hospital and Main Street and a lot of other areas in our town, and so that we're not hit with as many PSPS events as well as the duration of those events. So we will continue to update the public on those, and I know we have a meeting upcoming here soon, and looking forward to hopefully having a very good talk with them and hopefully better information to share as well. So with that, we'll move on. Item four, Closed Session Report. Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, the council do not have closed session, so there's nothing to report.
Great, thank you. Moving right along then to Item Five, Adoption of Agenda. All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The agenda is adopted, thank you. We don't have any ceremonial items this evening, so we'll move on to Item Seven, Public Comments. And this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And we'll go ahead and start with Item 7.2, Oral Communications. So we will go ahead, Regina, you can go ahead and open up the line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to start with a few emails that I received, requests to be read out loud. The first one is from Sue Rodman. She writes, "With wildfires burning all around us, Placerville needs to get serious about our hazardous vegetation ordinance. In particular, major streets that would, that would be escape routes need to have clearance so that people could escape. I invite you to drive over Pacific Street and notice the overhang of tree branches. Then go up Sacramento Hill and notice the overhanging vines there. Now imagine how you would drive through those to escape if given the order to evacuate. If your imagination fails, recall the tunnels of flame people tried to drive through to get out of paradise, and how many people died trying. Please, let's do some cleaning up along our street right-of-way now. Pacific Street and Sacramento Hill are just the beginning of the list. I'm sure you can all add your favorite streets." The next one is from Louis Smith III of the Wapoomnas Tribe. It says, "Dear City Council and Placerville Registered Voters, the Wapoomnas Tribe is championing the five Preserve Historic Placerville petitions on behalf their proponents, Michael Drobisch for the Historic District and Old City Hall, Kirk Callen Smith for the Druid Monument, and Mandy Maniki Rodriguez for Wapoomnas Tribal Consultation Status. The four historic preservation initiatives, as per the state constitution, were titled, summarized, and given official registration numbers by City Attorney Mr. Driscoll, then returned on July 15. These circulated petitions should be posted on the city clerk's elections webpage under the header of Circulated Petitions. City clerk, please post these circulating petitions on your elections webpage. City clerk, please read the numbers at each item line. The four historic preservation initiatives can be described as, number one, amend the general plan with the 2012 Historic District Boundary from west to east Main Street, which benefits building owners to seek out grants, loans, and tax breaks for restoring their buildings according to the Secretary of Interior Standards. Number two, to retain the Druid Monument in place and stop the plans for a squareabout at Cedar Ravine and Clay Street. Number three is to save the Old City Hall from becoming apartments and allow it to be restored as a hand-drawn fire museum and historical interpretive center. Number four allows the local Aboriginal Native Miwok Tribe, the Wapoomnas, to have the ability to protect archaeological sites with tribal consultation status, to consult with the city on all sequoia projects and oversee their native artifacts to be saved rather than bulldozed and thrown into the, in the trash by the city. Number five, referendum to repeal the June 23, 2020 City Council Resolution Number 8865. This is a petition to stop the city from desecrating the tribe's sacred site, continuing to violate the city general plan and their sequoia documents for the Upper Broadway Bicycle Project. Voters will receive materials by mail and email and can be returned with signatures at the tribe's booth at the Placerville Farmers Markets, Hangtown Leathers, and Placerville Health Foods. You can view the full text for the initiatives on www.realmiwoktribe.com/forhistory2020. And I also received a voicemail today from a lady named Kathleen McCord. She lives on Campbell Village near Clay Street. She just wanted to, oh wait, you know what? I'm going to hold on to that one. So let's go ahead and open up public comments for Item 7.2. These are items not relating to anything on the agenda. We'll start with Ed Ingram. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Ed.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry. Mayor Saragosa, City Councilmember. Just took me a little time to get this button pushed. Anyway, we were expecting a, a meeting, a Zoom meeting with all the members here with the Clay Street residents in the city, and we had not gotten any information of the changes. So if there's any changes of a meeting, a Zoom meeting with the residents, as well as other residents in Pacific Street, and that for is a cure for this queue of traffic that's using our side streets for Highway 50. If you can answer that question for us, that'd be really great. I appreciate your time. I know you got a big calendar full, a lot of things to do, but if you can stay with this, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay, caller 846, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, it's Jennifer, neighbors of Ed and Tammy, and, you know, we, we are concerned that this neighborhood chat hasn't been scheduled. I just, I don't really understand why it hasn't been, but, but we really feel like, like this has, you know, been dragged out. And then as far as, I'm confused about the trip-to-green concept. I think it's a great year. It doesn't matter really how much traffic there is. It's really more about the, how the local, I think, folks in, you know, on the, either side where those traffic lights are, are going to get used to the whole process of, you know, going with the highway side, not making left-hand turns, going up and, and using the overpasses. And I think, you know, I think maybe it's even better if there's lighter traffic. I don't understand why that can't be implemented, you know, now. I guess the concept was to try to time it with Apple Hill because that's such a, a peak traffic time, but I see it as valuable at any time, and I don't see why this year's Apple Hill or just the top traffic and the COVID traffic. There's plenty of traffic to experiment with, so I really hope that you will try to make that happen. I don't really understand why it's not. I can't imagine that it's that much funding, and I can't ima- I, I can't imagine that it's that much funding and I can't imagine that Caltrans or that, you know, with the millions of dollars of grant funding that, that the funding isn't available. So I hope you'll address that too. And then otherwise, I'll just say, we did have a really great speaker, um, on, you know, the New Deal, WPA era of the 1930s, all those programs. And, and it did give a great context last week for our 1939 New Deal Post Office, one of 1,100 post offices that was built during that period. And the wonderful mural that we have inside there, that building, building sitting vacant for years and years. We don't understand, you know, why, um, when you've got the Gem and Mineral Society. This is of course mostly between the county and, and those folks. But, um, for, for Plasterville that doesn't, isn't aware, there's a really great idea about the Gem and Mineral Society, uh, doing something with our, our amazing geology around here and Natural Resource Museum. So anyway, just wanted to add that point as well. And, um, it sounds like we had, you know, multiple CCC camps, uh, you know, around lots of neat things that happened during that 1930s period, um, that, that that building is a part of. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay, Tammy, go ahead and unmute yourselves.
Hello, council members. This is Tammy Danz Ingram, Clay Street residents. How are you tonight?
Good.
Awesome. I'm calling about the guard rail that is on Franklin and Clay Street, um, that has been hit multiple times through, um, the last couple of years due to speeding. Um, I've talked to Nick Stone multiple times and each time, um, it's either need another bid or you guys are going to try to figure out how to do it on your own. Or, um, we're still working on other contracts with other contractors. Um, I would like to see something done with it because it is definitely a safety issue. It is, um, if a car goes through, it's going to be in my house. And there's no integrity left with the, uh, the guard rail. And, um, we've been working on this with you guys for, I don't know, over a year and nothing has been done. So would appreciate something because the traffic's not getting lighter. They're getting faster and there's nothing left with that guard rail. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Ruth.
Uh, good evening. Thanks for taking my call. I have, um, about four or five just questions I wanted to ask, maybe you could answer. Regina had mentioned, and I know that there's five candidates for the two open positions coming up in November for City Council. And it had been mentioned that we could come down to City Council and take a look at the statements. Um, not all of us feel comfortable going out and going into public buildings. And I'm wondering if those five statements, if there are five, could be put on the website. I, I know they'll come out with the ballots for those who vote in the election. Some of us own buildings downtown and don't vote in the election, but are still curious about those who are running for City Council. So that was one question. Um, another question I had was, you know, I notice so often that it's Doug Beercamp, general engineers that were, uh, the city does business with. And just in general, it's not about a specific item today. But, um, I just wondered if every project, it must be, uh, open for bid. I, I'm not imagining that Doug Beercamp, uh, is on some kind of retainer with the city. He just must always win the bids or something. And then we look for, um, approval for change orders. And I just, um, in, in general, I'm curious how these, um, amounts in total come up. Eighty-four thousand, sixty-six thousand, whatever it is, uh, for saying that we can have change orders to jobs. The other thing quickly, um, I really appreciate what Dennis had to say. This is really, really, you know, we're five and a half months in and, and the strain is really great on a lot of people for COVID-19. I think a lot of people have that, um, COVID, uh, weariness. But I think we have to stay vigilant. Still a thousand people a day are dying from COVID-19 and I don't think we can let up. I did want to add to the list of what, what Dennis, uh, said of the people under stress is also caregivers. Caregivers who used to be able to take their loved ones to the senior center can no longer do that and get respite. It's just the situation the way it is. And next to young adults, caregivers are second in line for suicidal ideation. And I don't know what the answers are. I hope that we can do some outreach to support family caregivers who have the job 24/7. The last thing, I'd mentioned this last time and I'm going to bring it up again. And I don't want to have to do an inquiry for how you put in a records inquiry. I'd really rather work with you and not go that route.
Thirty seconds, Ruth.
Okay, thank you. I'm very curious about the arts and culture El Dorado that occupies City Hall. I know a year ago you guys approved an agreement for them as tenant and there was certain things that needed to be done. And I would really like to hear an update. I, I'm going to say that if I don't hear an update, I guess I'll just have to do a records request to see what that, uh, agreement was and make it an inquiry in a different way. I, I'd just rather not go that route. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from caller one oh seven.
Caller one oh seven, you're still on mute.
Is, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good, okay. Um, I wanted to find out if we have arrived at open forum. It looked like everybody was on different topics.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm so sorry. Uh, this is Jane McGinnis and I just, I wanted to, kind of on the same topic as a couple of weeks ago, we're now down at 68 days and counting to the first of November. Uh, the people, um, associated with the Western Slope Alliance are working hard to begin fundraising. There's going to be a meeting tomorrow. We'll get an update of how well they have been doing. But, um, I talked to Maureen today and she doesn't really have updated information until the meeting either. So I just wanted to, you know, lay on the table that it is 68 days and counting. And winters are pretty awful around here. I think that unless there's great good news tomorrow on how well Charlie's been able to do and, and some of the other people involved in this fundraising. If it's bad news, uh, we're going to need to come before you again and ask for some help, um, on pretty short order to prevent people from freezing to death this winter. And I don't mean to be dramatic. I mean, literally, I don't want to be the one coming out of my house falling over someone's body on the sidewalk. And I know you don't want that happening either. So thank you very much and I, I appreciate your time tonight.
Great, thank you.
Now taking public comment from caller one seven nine.
Glorious evening to you all. And, uh, I think you're doing a great job doing so many, keeping so many plates spinning. And I really appreciated not the, uh, jumping in the rash reaction on, uh, the, you know, the news item and so many other items. Uh, this is Jonathan Gaines-Hurl. Um, um, in my time, I just would like to mention, I think, one of the striking, most striking things that the Lord had me bring before the supervisors and you all was reading an article from the local Senior Times about taking care of pets, uh, in, in climate weather. Uh, and it was very compassionately written. I'm going to put it in a book. I've written seven books, but this new book is titled Homing the Homeless. Um, but, uh, the article was just, it speaks about what, to leave an animal out in, in freezing, sleeting rain, uh, much less snow, is actually against the city ordinance. And I was so impressed when I went to the Taj Mahal, uh, about a month ago when I lost my cat, meaning the local city animal shelter. That was so excellently done. My kudos for that and kudos for, for, um, administrating such a marvelous city, uh, that we all are blessed to live in. Um, I don't know what my time has left, but I just want to say that, that, uh, I think the citizenry would be proud of the city and the county, uh, stepping up, not just meeting with your two by two and, but moving, moving ahead beyond the, um, joint agreement to, to move together on the issue of homelessness and move toward a navigation center or a new life transformation center. But, uh, tying it all up, a disaster is ahead of us. We all know down at Lake, we know that they were warned, they were also misinformed. And the trader who had them go this, this more difficult route was really the murderer in the situation. But focusing from that, November, December, I remember a Christian friend of mine, uh, Dan, I'll tie it up in 30 seconds. He, um, he was not only homeless, his wife had died in the last two or three months. And he was living on the, under the mosquito, um, bridge overpass of Highway 50. Uh, and then he was in the hospital, I think, because of, uh, living in the un- inclement weather, uh, with, uh, congestive heart failure. We're going to have a disaster with or without a COVID surge. And as city fathers and mothers, I believe it's incumbent on you all and the supervisors to open up some type to have something planned and not to throw that on the public. It is the responsibility of the leaders. And I believe that you have the, the, um, noblest oblige to step up to a plate with the county and to do what marvelously can be done, must be done before the winter closes these homeless, 613 homeless people out. God bless you for your leadership. Good night, God bless.
Thank you, Jonathan.
All right, I'm going to call last call for item seven point two, oral communication. And, um, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to read this, go back to reading this, this voicemail message. This was from Kathleen McCord. She lives on Campbell Village. Um, she says that she's concerned and afraid, um, because of what she has observed. She says that she wishes the City Council would consider, um, the fire hazard in that area due to the Apple Hill traffic. Um, she says it's hard to get down to, out onto her road. Um, and the traffic there has been impacted over the last few years. So, um, that is that. Anybody else want, wish to speak on item seven point two? I see no further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, Regina. Cleve, could you, um, I know there's been some confusion over, um, the, the trip to green, um, that it's not so much that it was COVID in terms of like workers aren't out there, but that the grant money actually was delayed, is my understanding.
Yeah, the, the award of the grants was delayed. We do have that award now, uh, or I should say EDCDC has that award, the Transportation Commission. The, the issue is that in working with, uh, Woodrow Delory and EDCDC, Caltrans will not simply turn the lights off. There has to be a feasibility study to find out what roads have to be detoured, what areas they have to be detoured to, uh, what the impacts of that are, what they put on the street. That's just something that Caltrans will require for us to do this. And it's my understanding that they are putting out the RFP, uh, this fall, uh, EDCDC. And once they have that, uh, then they can look at, um, uh, doing, doing the actual study. As soon as it comes back and says, yes, this is what needs to be done, this is how you can do it, and it can be applied to program. The question will be at that point, as was brought up tonight, do we do it immediately then? Or do we wait until, uh, the busiest time of the year, uh, to do that? Because it probably won't be, uh, according to Woodrow, it will not be ready, um, this fall. It might not be till the first of the year that would potentially be available.
Thank you. Uh, I guess, uh,
Believe along those lines, um, if, if there's an emergency, those lights are allowed to be tripped, right?
In an emergency, yeah, that's, that's a different story. Yes, they, they.
I get it, but, and maybe I'm, you know, I know it's oranges and apples, but I'm just saying, it just seems, there's so many people are just so concerned and they really would like to try that, um, you know? And I, I quite frankly think it's, um, I think it's going to work. But, um, it's to, uh, you know, these studies are just mind-boggling. Everything we do, we get delayed months and months and months. And it's just, everything has to be studied to death. And, you know, um, I, I get it in one way, but in another way, I really almost think this could be classified as an emergency.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Patty. Uh, so on the rest of these, um, these were all pretty specific, like staff level questions. So, uh, I know our, uh, our department heads were listening to all these things. So, uh, that'll give you some time to potentially go back, um, on any of these questions that came up during, uh, uh, oral communications. Um, and then if for some reason those questions aren't answered, uh, then please come back and, and let us know. Thank you. Uh, so moving on to item eight, uh, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Any questions on the consent calendar?
May I move the consent calendar?
All right, we have a first and a second. Uh, we'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment.
Public comment is now open for item eight, consent calendar. Kirk Smith, go ahead.
Yes, I had a number of questions about the, uh, accounts that are being paid out. One is 1.5 million dollars paid to the State Water Resources Control Board, I think it is. Just to ask if you could help us figure out what that's for. Then there is about 124,000 for the Dewberry Engineering Company. I guess that's for the Clay Street project, specifically what they do. And then there's a sum for legal fees, uh, to a firm that's different from who you've hired in the past. What's that for? And are there lawyers that you've, uh, used besides those two? Barry Berry and, or Best and Best, and the one that's listed for tonight. And then there's $10,000 for W R E C O. And then there's, uh, $26,000 for IT equipment. What's that going for? The last one was 136,000 for medical insurance. Is that just for one month, uh, all city employees, the city council, a whole year, quarterly? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Last call for item eight, consent calendar. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Dave, he just wanted to hit on a couple of those, I think some of those might be just answered easily on an email to you, but, um,
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So there were several questions. The first one was regarding check number eight four eight one seven to the State Water Resources Control Board. That is our annual payment of 1.5 million dollars, uh, for the 2006 State Revolving Fund Loan for the wastewater treatment plant improvements that were finished in 2009. There was a question about check number eight four seven one six to Dewberry Engineering. Um, that was for the Upper Broadway Bike Lanes, the Western Plasteful Interchange Phase Two Project and the Clay Street Bridge Widening and Intersection, uh, project of 123,000 dollars. That's all grant funded primarily. And regards to the health insurance, uh, that is one month to, um, special district, excuse me, Special District's Risk Management Authority, check number eight four eight one six. Um, that's for, uh, the regular employees that participate in that program for one month. I think it was one mentioned about a $10,000 check, but it wasn't clear to me, uh, which check that was about, unless anybody else can refer me to what question that was. that was about, unless anybody else can refer me to what question that was. So.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I believe now, Dave, that was check, um, eight four seven six three, W R E C O, um, W D I Phase two point two.
Yeah, that's correct. That was for the, um, Western Placerville Interchange Phase two point two. Um, that's currently in design. Um, so that, again, that cost is covered by restricted funds, grant funds, and, uh, temp fee funds.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we have a first and a second on the consent calendar. Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Akuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Burley.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
You are good at Kara, but.
Aye.
Thank you, Kara. Okay, that passes five oh. Uh, so tonight, uh, we don't have any items pulled, and we also do not have any ordinance or public hearings this evening. So we will move on to item twelve, discussion and action items, and item twelve point one. Uh, adopt a resolution approving a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and nineteen budget appropriation, uh, in state coronavirus relief funds for a police officer position and time, uh, assigned to the homeless outreach team. Approve a twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eighteen budget appropriation in state coronavirus relief funds for unemployment insurance costs. And three, approve a thirteen hundred, thirty-five dollar budget appropriation in state coronavirus relief funds, uh, for solid waste collection for homeless sheltering in place. Uh, and Mr. Warren has this for us this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, um, the state's adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget includes five hundred million dollars for Corona, coronavirus relief funds to help cities with populations less than five hundred thousand to offset the costs associated with the pandemic. Cities with population between three hundred thousand and five hundred thousand were allocated two hundred and twenty-five million dollars in aggregate. And cities with populations of less than three hundred thousand, like Placerville, were allocated two hundred and seventy-five million in aggregate. Uh, generally, the population of each city was used to determine their proportional share of the allocation, and no city received less than fifty thousand dollars. These funds can only be used for eligible costs incurred between March first and December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. So it actually straddles two fiscal years. Uh, on July seventh of two thousand and twenty, the city did receive notification from the state, it will be receiving a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars of CRF revenues. Uh, these revenues and expenditures have not been budgeted yet. So staff is recommending that, uh, the city council, um, basically, uh, a portion, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, um, as, as shown on page two of your, of the staff report. So the first thing is, um, we have a police officer position that's assigned to the homeless outreach team or hot team that directly services our homeless community while they shelter in place, uh, during the pandemic. Um, the police officer, any sworn officer position is presumed part of COVID, so there's no risk there. Um, but that's a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, and that really helps our operating budget right now. So it's much appreciated. The other piece is, you may recall, the CARES Act covers fifty percent of the COVID-related, um, unemployment insurance. We actually received a little bit for the first quarter. We only had a little bit of unemployment during that time, unemployment insurance cost. But the other fifty percent, um, the city is self-insured. We don't pay premiums like a lot of merchants do for insurance. We self-insure ourselves. So when somebody files a claim, uh, we're responsible for paying that normally. Now, we can actually apply the other fifty percent of that cost, which is estimated to be twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars, to the CRA funding. Um, and that's what we're recommending tonight. And then, uh, Mr. Morris, uh, has been working on placing a dumpster, um, to, as a place for the homeless to place, uh, solid waste on Upper Broadway. Um, and we're proposing, uh, between now and the end of December of that cost coming from these funds of one thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. And that's discounted. Eldorado disposal is giving us a great deal. And, uh, so at a discounted rate, um, that amount would come. So the total's one hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Um, the identified costs are needed to complete the first report that's due to the state on September fourth. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mr. Warren at this point?
I, I, Dave, I didn't quite understand your explanation for the unemployment insurance, how that has anything to do with the COVID.
Yeah, great question, uh, Councilmember Burley. So, um, we have, to give you an example, just the second quarter alone, we had fourteen thousand dollars in claims. We typically have, you said, zero. Um, and because of, uh, certain programs being canceled, uh, most of the employees that are on unemployment were seasonal part-time employees that were poised to work aquatics and other recreation programs that, uh, applied for unemployment. And, um, so the CARES Act directly is going to reimburse us fifty percent of that cost, so about seven thousand dollars for that one quarter. The other seven thousand dollars we're on the hook for, unless we find another funding source. So normally, that would come directly out of your general fund. But what we're saying is, let's use some of this CRA funding for that other seven thousand to cover that cost for that quarter. And also, the benefits, um, will flow through all the way to December thirty-first. So we're saying, let's, let's use that funding for fifty percent between March first all the way through, uh, December thirty-first for COVID-related unemployment costs. Fifty percent.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, well, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do have one comment that to read from Sue Rodman. Um, she writes, looks like an appropriate use of these funds, especially for a police officer, to be on the hot team and some trash pickup for our homeless. So, um, I'll open it up to public comment for the callers, um, or those joining, um, by their computer. Um, this is item twelve point one. All right, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any, um, any hands raised, so.
Okay, great. Thank you, Regina. Uh, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to city council.
I'll move for adoption.
All right. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Uh, any other comments? All right, I'll just say, um, and I know Dave said this as well, but, I mean, you were very specific, uh, ways we could spend these dollars. Um, I mean, if, if it has, if this had been done correctly, it would have just been, here's the money for your city, use it as you see best fit. Uh, but of course, it came with strings. And so, thank you, Mr. Warren and the team for, uh, coming up with ways for us to spend this money appropriately and in a real need for our, for our community. So thank you. Uh, to go ahead, uh, the roll call, please. Thank you.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Akuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Burley.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, passive. Uh, we'll move on to item twelve point two. Uh, adopt a resolution authorizing the engineering department to release a request for proposal for construction management services and construction contract documents for public build, public bidding for the Placerville Station Two project. And Ms. Neves has this for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and council members. The item before you requests permission to release both a request for proposals for construction management services, as well as releasing the construction contract documents for public bidding for Placerville Station Two project. This project has a long history, and it began in about two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, when the city received a grant from the Federal Transit Administration administered by regional transit to build a park and ride facility immediately south of the existing Phase One facility located at the corner of Mosquito Road and Clay Street. This project has overcome several major obstacles, including a CPUC exemption, utility agreements, funding hurdles, and even most recently, obtaining an encouragement permit from Caltrans for a portion of the work that's located within the State Right of Way. At first, the question might be raised, why do we need another park and ride facility? And that's actually an easy question to answer with regards to this project. This is not just another park and ride. The purpose of this project was actually to provide additional parking spaces for not only the transit services, but also to provide permanent and safe bicycle and pedestrian connection to the Eldorado Trail. The parking lot also acts as an overflow parking during larger Main Street events such as the tree lighting, as well as a Christmas parade, and daily parking for Eldorado Trail users. The future improvements of this project also include a location for tour bus parking, which is a need that the city has had for some time now, as patrons visit and enjoy downtown Placerville. The future improvements also include roadway repaid, yay, from Clay Street to Highway fifty on Mosquito Road, which has surpassed its useful service life. So this is not just a park and ride project. It's actually bringing a lot of value to the community through its multiple uses. It's been a long road to get this project ready for construction, and we're here now, ready to move forward. Being that this project is primarily federally funded, which is a tedious process for project delivery, and due to the reduced staffing in the engineering department, it's also become imperative to seek help in managing the construction contract. And the item before you also requests for staff to release a request for proposals for construction management services. Following hiring of a CM firm, the city will be ready to release the project on formal bid per Public Contract Code Section twenty-two zero thirty-two, as we bid all projects publicly beyond a two hundred thousand dollar value. Uh, this concludes my verbal report, and I have any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Uh, any questions at this point?
So I, I do have one question. I know that, um, back twenty years ago, when we were doing downtown, we, uh, we did a, uh, we, we did a brick inlay stamp into the concrete. And it was in, we actually, it was a demonstration project up there where we did the crosswalks. And are we gonna continue that style of pavement treatment where we did the, you, we do the brick inlay and the painting of that?
We are. We're actually gonna do quite a few improvements to that crosswalk, too. Um, we are.
Let me correct that. It's not a brick inlay, but it's a, it's a stamped brick looking. It's painted.
Yeah, no, really nice. It's actually held up for quite a long time. They did a great job. Um, so yes, we are going to keep that aesthetic feature of the crosswalks. We're actually gonna do a couple of additional enhancements to the crosswalks. Um, one area in particular is the direct, uh, trail crossing on Mosquito Road that goes to the Eldorado Trail. Uh, it's, you know, there's quite a few people that clip right along on that road, even with the, you know, not so great roadway conditions. And anticipating that when roadway conditions, there is a potential for, um, increased speeding, we've done a couple of things. We've actually reduced the travel lane width to eleven feet wide, which is a pretty standard, um, implementation for us citywide on new projects, um, as a really, um, cost-effective, traffic calming. Um, and the other is, we're actually doing additional improvements to the crosswalk, uh, similar to what we did on the Broadway crosswalks, which is, we're doing rapid flashing beacons, solar-powered, um, enhanced high-visibility crosswalks at that location, too. It's been too many times where, you know, we've seen, um, folks trying to make that trail crossing, and it ends up being a bit scary for both parties, both the pedestrian and the driver. So, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
I, I'm just, I'm happy to hear they're gonna put up one of those flashing. I think those flashing lights are just ideal. They certainly catch everybody's attention. And you know, too, um, you were mentioning the people that cross there. There's a lot of, uh, ladies cross it, push it, pushing little strollers with their babies in there. And it's, I, I've kinda held my breath a couple of times when I watched what, you know, happened. So, thank you.
Yeah, you kinda know the locals versus the non-local traffic when the locals stop for somebody to walk across there. Uh, okay, thank, thank you, Rebecca. We'll go ahead then and open it up for public comment.
Public comment is now open for item twelve point two. Um, I'll start by reading a comment from Sue Rodman. She writes, this definitely needs to be done so this project can go into construction. Uh, now taking public comment from Tammy Dan Zingram.
Good evening, Tammy.
Hello, councilmembers. Um, this is a project, long, long wish was done a long time ago. The dust and everything else, um, the homeless down there in the dirt area. So I so look forward to the improvement to the area. The crosswalk lights that, um, you guys are gonna be putting in are long overdue. Um, I s- I sit at my, uh, living room window and watch almost, you have no idea how many people have almost died there. So I'm grateful for that. And another idea, with all this new additional, um, space that you guys are providing for the downtown merchants, I think it'd be absolutely perfect place for the farmer's market to be. You've got bathrooms, you have parking, um, you've got Highway fifty, um, visual. Um, anyways, yeah, thank you. And the construction people that you guys have hired, um, that have been working on Mosquito Road has done a absolutely beautiful job in keeping down the dust and, and everything else. So I would hire them again. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
I'm taking public comment from caller eight five seven.
Go ahead, eight five seven. You may be on mute still.
Hello, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Mike Grubish. So I'm all for this project. Um, my concerns, I, first, I second the, uh, potential farmer's market location. Um, second, the city has a, um, parking lot shading ordinance that you're supposed to shade roughly half the parking lot during high noon in the middle of the summer, whatever that is. So I don't remember the plans. It's been so long. Will there be any kind of shade trees out in the parking lot to help with that? Um, my major concern is the trail traffic bombing across Mosquito Road. I use that road all the time. I see it all the time. Bicycleists, pedestrians, they just shoot straight across the road when cars are going thirty-five hour, miles an hour average. I like where the trailhead meets Mosquito Road. There's a fence that forces at least the bicyclist to really slow down and not shoot straight across. And I'm wondering if you can do something like that on the bus stop side. Uh, but it is easier as a driver to see the pedestrians and bikes wanting to access from the bus stop side as opposed to from coming off the trail, where they just shoot straight across the crosswalk. And it's like, lock them up. Um, so pedestrian safety, uh, key. And I think that's it. The contractor is awesome. Uh, the other thing is, the city has used this lot so long for construction staging. Will the city still be able to use it for that? I mean, can you have equipment in there leaking oil on the new asphalt? Or, you know, are we still gonna be able to retain it as a valuable asset of construction staging to get a lower bid on future projects? So those are some comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Last call for public comment on item twelve point two. No further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Okay, we'll bring it, we'll close public comment, bring it back to city council. Um, Rebecca, on the, this, I think I, the trees are in the, the plans there, but just if you wanted to make a brief comment on that.
Yeah, actually, um, the plan that we showed in the, here is not actually the construction plan. Um, and because partly, partially because this project has taken so long to come and bring it forward, we wanted to kinda show something that was easy to read and to understand the, the concept of the project. But conceptually, this is in alignment with the contract documents. The difference is, we actually have, uh, more vegetation than what's shown on here. So, um, Mr. Drobisch is absolutely correct, uh, that we have applied our shade ordinance with it, and we are, um, complying with adding sufficient shade trees. And then, um, that was the question that you asked me to answer.
Correct. Thank you. Um, any other questions, uh, for staff at this point? Or entertain emotions?
I'll move for approval.
All right. Sorry, Kara. Oh, sorry, Kara. Sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, council member.
May I unmute yourself?
I hate that mute button. Just a quick comment, you know, when I first read this, I was thrilled about the sidewalk improvements and the crossing improvements. But when it came to all the parking spaces, I was a little concerned that with the changing trends in transportation and transit with driverless cars and ridership and everything that more parking spaces may not be the best use of, you know, limited city space. So, I really thank Ms. Neves for her report. It clarified, you know, what an asset these additional spaces will be. And I really like the ideas presented by the public of using it as a farmer's market space or other event space. If we are going to pave this area, it'd be great to really see it put to the best possible use. So, I think we have a first and a second and that's all my comment.
Sorry about that, Kara.
No worries.
All right, yeah, I'll echo that. I thought the farmer's market idea is really good. So, everyone, thank you, Tammy, and we'll definitely be thinking about that. So, with that, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I get a repeat on who seconded the motion?
It's Councilmember Borelli.
Okay, thank you. Now for roll call, we'll do Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just to thank the city engineer, this has been, this is as long overdue as any of our projects and it's gone through several iterations. And I think it's landed on one that has got a good acceptance and will have good acceptance by the community. When would you anticipate the utility relocation work starting? And the big question is the Caltrans encroachment permit. They don't ask for them from us, but we seem to always have to ask them for an encroachment permit.
Great questions. Number one, the utility relocation work is tentatively scheduled for September. We actually got a date from PG&E in the last couple of weeks and so we're very excited. We have, we often stare at those poles directly in the driveway entrances and just the vein on my forehead shows up for that. But thank you for being with us as we moved through that process. I want to also commend Cory Sheestal, who's our engineer on staff for the project, and also Jennifer Donovan with PG&E. She's just phenomenal. I don't know what we would do without her. She's, you know, navigating within a restructured process herself and she has just been fantastic to work with and the city truly appreciates her being that liaison between this new process and the city. So, and then as far as the encroachment permit, it's kind of funny because we've been working on this process for about two years and then it's almost like they just got a feeling that they needed to issue it pretty quickly because we got it on Thursday afternoon after two years. And no kidding, we might have had a happy dance in the office. We were very excited. So, well, you know, we're not going to ask the how and the why. We're grateful we have it. Let's move on.
Boy, it's almost like you could have paid me to ask those two questions.
Yeah.
Any other project, it would have been, oh, you know, the 47th phone call to them and 97th email to this office. I'm coming down to look at the encroachment permit and we'll do a happy dance.
Yeah, I should have set that up earlier for that question.
Those are excellent, that's excellent news on both those fronts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, of course. And thank you, Rebecca. Okay, moving along. Item 12.3. Adopt a construction contract with Doug Veercamp, General Engineering for the Spring Street pavement repair from Coloma Road to Bedford Avenue in an amount not to exceed $703,831 and the Mosquito Road stabilization Clay Street to City Limits project in an amount not to exceed $545,502.70 for a total award amount of 1.249 million and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Provide a budget appropriation for Measure L funds in the amount of $647,937. Oh, no.
No.
Authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute any necessary contract change orders with Doug Veercamp up to $84,000 and authorize on Spring Street and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute any necessary contract change orders with Doug Veercamp up to $66,000 for the Mosquito Road stabilization project. Sorry, I'm not thinking of worse than it was like the other day. I couldn't think of inventory. So, there you go. Yeah, my brain's fogged. And Ms. Neves has this for us this evening.
Well, this is an item just about everybody has wanted to see for quite some time. As you know, when Measure L was first passed in 2016, at the end of 2016, and when the funds first started to accumulate in 2017, both Spring Street and Mosquito Road were identified as community priority projects. And since then, we've been diligently working towards getting this construction contract out to bid and awarded. But nothing worthwhile is ever easy and nor is it fast and especially during COVID. So, as staff released the Spring Street and pay, Spring Street pavement repair and Mosquito Road stabilization projects for public bid per Public Contract Code Section 22032 on July 8th, we also opened bids virtually on July 30th with Doug Veercamp, General Engineering, coming in as the low bid for the combined contract amount of 1.249,333.80. Bid actually is approximately $150,000 less than the engineer's estimate. And as such, when we, it's fast expectations for project costs and we're actually below that. And so, you know, one question came up, you know, how do these, how does the city bid the project? You know, we're actually, under the guise of the law, Public Contract Code identifies how public works projects are sent out to bid, not only for self-performing work, but for informal bids and formal bids as well. And, you know, it's, one of the questions came up was, does Doug Veercamp, General Engineering just seem to win all these? The short answer is, he does because Doug loves this town. So, that's one of the reasons why he gives us very comparable and very good prices and he ends up beating out other contractors locally and out of county as well. But he's not always the low bid, but especially recently, he's very, been, the company itself has been very aggressive about wanting to serve Placerville through public improvement projects. So, but, and it works out in our favor. We actually end up with a bid and a contract amount that's below the engineer's estimate and with an alignment of staff's expectations. So, and the amounts presented before you this evening also, you know, they're not necessarily arbitrary amounts. The $66,000 and the $84,000 represent approximate contingency value of about 12%. Typically on public works projects, we like to do 10%. But when we, the second we get utilities involved, we throw in a little extra because they never seem to keep us, you know, short of any surprises or amusement. So, that's the reason for those amounts under the contract change order amounts. However, and as staff investigated both roads, we found that they are both in need of some underground utility improvements. The bulk of the Mosquito Underground improvements are being addressed right now by our current contractor out there on Phase 1, which is CE Cox Engineering. And as such, we also are addressing now with this contract, the paving for both Mosquito Road and Spring Street, and they both exceeded their useful service life. And as we proceed, we're looking at starting construction about mid-September for both projects. And we are also looking at the potential of adding in some additional paving where we can, you know, some of the outlying areas as far as intersection improvements, too. But for this particular contract, we are looking at items presented before you and summarized in staff's report. It's a little bit much to get through, but you know, I just, this is the conclusion of my verbal report and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Neves. Questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is now open for item 12.3. I'd like to start again by reading another comment by Sue Rodman. She writes, "Our engineering team shines again, first by combining these two originally separate projects to realize savings from economy of scale, second by providing options for paving methods, and third for including a limited amount for on-the-ground change orders to deal with the unknowns that seem to be given for this old and much-loved city. This foresight will allow work to continue instead of bringing back every little unknown sewer problem or water leak to City Council for approval while the project is stalled waiting for approval. The Measure HL Committee endorsed this approach to the combined project at our last meeting August 18th, 2020." We'll go ahead and open public comment up to Tammy Danz Ingram. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, council members. Tammy Danz Ingram, once again. So, maybe we can get Veercamp to do the guard rail on Franklin and Clay, joking aside, but not really. And when is the project on Mosquito Road, you know, the realignment and everything projected in being finished? Because you're starting in September, so we're going into Apple Hill season, this and that, but when is the closing date? Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Now taking public comment from caller 857. Sorry, I don't know if I had unmuted myself there. Did caller 857, are you?
I'm here. Okay, great to hear that this project's going forward. I'm all for it, of course. Great to hear that Veercamp is doing, hopefully, the paving because he seems to be one of the few that actually knows how to pave a road. I've seen other people try it and they need to go to a third world country because they can't do it. He's great. Okay, so now, if Mosquito Road to the city limits is restored, you will have, be restoring the drag strip that I remember from 15, 20 years ago and the city PD can now make a small fortune in speeding tickets to help pay for this. But anyway, and when it's all said and done, I'll provide the ceremonial cake, the giant red ribbon to go across the street, but I need somebody with a giant pair of scissors because I don't have any of those. That's all. Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks, Michael.
Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I think Laurel's got a pair of those.
Laurel's got a pair.
Now taking public comment from Ruth.
Thank you. Hey, I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Neves for answering my questions. I feel very satisfied with her response. Thank you. And I guess I want to reiterate what someone else had said about the September, mid-September date, having a business downtown and knowing how jammed up Main Street already gets and, I mean, it doesn't seem, I don't really know all the routes that people take trying to get around and with their GPS, but, you know, there's probably nothing that can be done. It, you know, roadwork has to happen when it has to happen, but I'm just looking at the map right now. It's on my computer screen and I'm looking at the part of Spring Street and I'm just curious if that plays into the city's plans of the horrendous backups that we have and now if that street is, especially Spring, is off limits already, citizens will be going different routes and then, you know, to add to that, all the jammed up Apple Hill people. So, just a, just a question, just, you know, the continuing saga of Apple Hill. Thank you again, Ms. Neves, for your response to my questions.
Thank you.
Last call for public comment on item 12.3. No further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. We'll go ahead and close public comments, bring it back to the council. There was Rebecca a question on the timeframe in terms of the end date, and I know that's always a tricky thing to say depending on how things go, but do we have an estimate?
So, Spring Street is going to start mid-September and then the intent is, and given, you know, this is all preliminary discussions because they don't have a contract until council takes action. So, they are working on their detour plans and their schedule, but right now verbally they said around mid-September, starting on Spring Street, which has the majority of the underground work in this contract. They're anticipating a few weeks out there. They will have some closures, they will have some detour routes. As far as I know, they're not going to be doing any weekend work, so they're frees up some of the, I guess, the local resident congestion concern during Apple Hill season. But it does, we are looking at that as well as part of the staging and the detours. The intent is also, once they get far enough along on Spring Street and the underground is complete, they'll take the underground crew and kick them over to Mosquito Road to do a couple of things and then they'll start the paving on Spring and then pave on Mosquito. And partially, the intent is to not have both of those, you know, both of those roadways, you know, shut down or locked down during any kind of Apple Hill congestion season and certainly not during fire season. And also, I do want to reiterate that anytime we do any kind of detours or roadwork or closures, we always allow for at least a minimum 10-foot emergency vehicle access through fair, through the site. We definitely support Eldorado County Fire and RPD and so it's important to get them through a work zone if they need it. And so, we do make that concession as well. And then, partially, the timing of this actually falls in sequence and I'm looking at Mosquito Road when I talk about this. So, right now, Phase 1, the utility portion of the project's out to construction. They're going to be wrapping up with that in about a few weeks. So, the timing of the Phase 2 paving part with the Veercamp contract is going to follow the CE Cox contract. And then, after that, schedule-wise follows Placerville Station 2 because Placerville Station 2 also includes repaving on Mosquito Road from Clay to Highway 50. So, we started at the city limits and we're working our way down towards Highway 50. And then, I think that that was the questions I received from public comment. Anything else?
Anything for Ms. Neves? Yes, Ms. Taylor.
Have we looked at any traffic calming possibilities for these roads? And if so, if they're, you know, if it's deemed necessary for, say, speed bumps on Mosquito? I know we've gotten a letter from a resident on Spring Street requesting some traffic calming on Spring Street. Would we be able to incorporate some of those things into this paving project?
Sure. So, great question. As far as, I mentioned before, you know, one of our almost immediate traffic calming implementations that we do on every project now is we narrow the travel length to 11 feet. And then, when you change a roadway condition so abruptly, you know, it's important to not have a knee-jerk reaction in traffic calming because you can actually cause unintended consequences. So, once we do the narrower lanes, we'll look at the road again and see how it goes and, you know, because we also have, we also have the rapid flashing beacons that are going to be in place at the trail crossing and there's a few other subtle, you know, improvements that we're doing. So, it's important to not have that knee-jerk reaction. We will look at the road again after that. The other question you had was regarding a need to. So, we have done speed and traffic surveys through our awesome police department. We did look at, we actually did even for Spring Street, we did a speed survey as recent as January of this year, which right now seems like 17 years ago. Basically, we have about 300 cars a day on that road, which sounds like a lot, but again, I go back to, you know, Highway Design Manual and you look at ASHTO standards, a two-lane road can handle quite a bit more cars than that. For comparison's sake, you know, Placerville Drive handles about 13,000 cars a day and two-lane roads can get up to relatively close to about 20,000 cars a day, per the design manuals. As matter of perspective and opinion is a different session, but, but so as far as traffic volumes and speed, the other thing, too, was the highest speed that we saw on Spring Street was 31 miles an hour. So, people aren't really speeding excessively, however, a nice new road could lead to that. So, we definitely, that's where we kicked in the 11-foot lanes to narrow. Sorry, for the long- Sorry for the long answer. Thank you.
Yes. Because this is an important topic, and I appreciate Councilmember Taylor bringing it up because folks don't realize the price tag that go along with some of these accessories. What was the cost of the speed humps that we put in front of Eldorado High School when we redid Canal Street?
They were about fifteen thousand apiece.
Each, so thirty thousand dollars to effectively put the humps in.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. That's an expensive hump. Yeah, I mean, it's important to understand that, I appreciate you answering that question on the fly, Rebecca, but it's big. And that was during new construction. We incorporated that, and I believe, again, that was a Veer Camp engineering project.
Yes.
Not inexpensive, and your lane narrowing idea seems to be working pretty well. And, oh, it saves money, so I really appreciate that. I'm ready to make a motion.
Wait, I have one more question, please. Rebecca, you know that I live off of Spring and Tunnel, and...
You're a speeder.
No, I'm not. I creep along. That, where the turn is, that, that the folks, when they turn off of Spring Street onto Tunnel Street is really, really a dangerous corner.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if there's, and you know, and the senior citizen complex is just there, and it's not right now, but, you know, when the folks were allowed to go up there, it's pretty heavily traveled with the senior citizens. Also, we have the Tunnel Street Apartments, which are pretty much elderly folks, just a block down the road. And then we also have the high school, when it's in session, boy, when it lets out, you really know where those cars are coming from. So I am just wondering if you have made any concessions for that turn or not. I, I'm wondering if some striping could be put in there to, just to guide people, you know, to turn. I don't know. I, you're the engineer, but I just would like to request that maybe you look into that.
I, I can second that. I mean, I, I use that, I'm right off of there as well because I'm of Green. And it is sort of, you kind of have to creep up a little bit, and then you kind of gas it a little bit, make sure you don't have a car coming down the hill towards you.
You can't see, you know, it's, and I'm just thinking of all the folks that travel on it.
We can absolutely look at that. We actually have a site walk with our resident engineer, with our construction management team this week. And one of the things we're actually looking at was, okay, we got this awesome bid price. It's below the engineer's estimate. What do, what do we, you know, when we develop a project, when we develop an estimate, we look at a couple of things. One, we look at how much money do we have? And number two, what do we need to get done versus what we'd like to get done? And so if we do have some room in there, that's when we go back and we do look at where we can add value into the job, and that's usually done through a method of change orders, usually client or city initiated because there, you know, we, we think, okay, well, you know, we only have X amount of dollars, but what we really want to do is we would love to be able to just get a little bit more paving or just get a little bit better striping. So this, that's a great comment, and we will absolutely look at that. I believe on Thursday afternoon is when we're walking, Thursday morning, Thursday afternoon. Thank you for that comment. We will look at it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rebecca. Vice Mayor Thomas.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge the, the efforts of Measure H and Measure L Committee and their participation in, in helping bring this product, this project forward. And I'd like to go all the way back to two thousand sixteen when the city voters approved the funding because the projects that we have been talking about, this, this council, last council, and would not have been possible. I mean, not at a chance in HE double hockey sticks could we have done these projects with, with the current budgets and fundings that we have, the funding sources. You know, I'm, I'm the last one that wants to pay more taxes. I'm the last one that wants to, you know, to, to fund government more than we need to and give government, you know, give government more money than we need to because they're working for us. In this case, this city needed these, needed these fundings from Measure H and Measure L.
There was no other choice. We had to do it.
No other choice, right. So thank you. So I want to express the appreciation for this, for the people in this community and acknowledge the efforts that went into getting those passed, the people that voted for it, the fact that we were the third highest voted measure in the state that, that, that cycle. I mean, the, the citizens really recognized the needs for this, and the fact that Measure H and Measure L Committees are still, it's one of those committees that we rely on to, to dig in deep into these types of projects, to come up with, to come up with recommendations to the council and working with our, our engineering staff to, to work together as a collective team to, to develop these project lists. Not everybody's streets are getting done right now, and I, and I, and I certainly appreciate that. But if you look into this project, there is a, one of them was down to a PCI as low as twelve right there on Mosquito. I mean, zero to a hundred, and there are twelve. It's almost dirt at that point. I mean, we're lucky. It's, another question, is potholes a reasonable traffic mitigation option? Because we could, you know, could we build some potholes into this project? It might, it might be cheaper to go down than up. Just wondering. But I wanted to put that out there because I, and I know how, how valuable these dollars are to our engineering department and how they stretch these dollars as, as far as possible. And I hear this every time she speaks. She's working it from every angle. So I also want to recognize the efforts that you have put into it because this is truly, truly, uh, uh, an amazing thing for this town to have the opportunity to fix our roads and our sewers and our water pipes that we would not be able to do otherwise.
And I, I really think it should, the merits of having an oversight committee is a great one. And I, I think it helps pass vote measures, actually.
Absolutely. Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
I just want to touch on something that Councilmember Thomas just mentioned about the potholes. When we were part of that meeting with the Friends of Clay Street several weeks ago, talking about some traffic calming measures, there was one resident on Bedford that begged us not to pave the potholes because it slowed traffic down, so. They, they might, maybe we should add them to the list on the traffic calming manual.
True. Like I said, I, my muscle memory has got me to, you know, how to maneuver. I'll, I'll kind of miss it a little bit.
Everybody looks like they're drunk going up Spring Street.
My little comp, my little course. Oh, yeah, you get your weed back now. Vice Mayor, go ahead and move approval of the item. All right. So we have, we have a first and a second. Any further comment? Yes. And thank Vice Mayor Thomas for reminding all of us. I was on the council when we went out for Measure H and Measure L, and it is an honor to have that level of support given to you by your voters. And I've often taken our, taken ourselves to task that we need to make sure that we're regularly informing our communities what we're doing and where the dollars are going. And even if it's the same answer, we need to be consistent. These projects take time. Spring Street was the foster child, or maybe, no, I should say the poster child, I guess, for Measure L during the election. Plenty of photographic opportunities of what was wrong with that street. And we did, as the council promised, to get it done probably sooner than we are at, at this point. What's, we have to remember, however, is that we had two consecutive winters, I believe it was seventeen and eighteen, that the storm drain system on the, I'll call it the east side of the Spring Street Hill, took, got into the bad habit of failing, flooded the telephone company building a couple of different times, created a sinkhole that would have swallowed a Volkswagen at least once that I'm aware of. And that was all because of the, the size and scope of the failed storm drain system that's under there. And so that project obviously prevented us from moving this forward. So now we know we have captured all of those things that nobody can see until those sinkholes arrive. And so engineering staff has done a great job in, in bringing this together, and I appreciate the, the fact that we have a local contractor. There is absolutely no need for anyone to worry about that contractor not understanding Apple Hill and what is going to need to be done. So his crews are efficient and improving the service that we'll get out of the project. I think it's funny that Mr. Grobich is already concerned about speeding in front of his house. And his particular section of Mosquito Road is probably about a twelve minus, so I think that's classic. And then to worry about, we're already getting calls for traffic calming on Spring Street. You know, you can't win some days, but you just keep trying. So, you know, it's just a pleasure to finally see this come together, and a lot of patience was required. And so kudos to all of us that supported it all along. We'll have to think about, these two have been the worst streets. This will be kind of fun, maybe for a minute or two, that the city engineer can think about nominating the next worst street. I think collectively, Spring Street has had that reputation now for decades. So we'll have to talk, Rebecca, about what we're going to name the next worst street once we get Spring and Mosquito done. Again, thank you to everybody, the Measure H Committee, Measure H and the Health Committee, and the citizens, and our, our staff, and all those contractors that have bid on these projects. And I'm happy to say that they have been actively bid on. And yes, we did have a contractor that doesn't know how to pave. Ray Lawyer, there was some product quality issues there, and that was not a local contractor. And it was very apparent that the material was not placed correctly. So these kind of mistakes can't happen. So, thank you, sir. Well said, Councilmember. Any other comments? Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Sorry, Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, and thank you very much, Rebecca. This is a huge project for the city. I can't wait to see those machines and workers out there on both of these streets. So really looking forward to it. Okay, moving on to item twelve point four. Designate Mayor Saragosa to be the city's voting delegate for the League of Cities Annual Conference and direct staff to complete the voting and delegate form and forward to the League of California Cities prior to the September thirtieth, twenty twenty deadline. And Ms. O'Connell has this for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this League's, League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo is usually, it alternates between northern and southern California. Last year, it was in Long Beach. Well, they started doing it virtually, and they are continuing to do the, the annual business meeting, which happens on the last day. So this is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. The annual business meeting is on Friday, and this is where membership, voting delegates, vote on league resolutions that affect cities across California, local governments. And so this report is asking the city council to nominate someone to be the voting, the designated voting delegate to vote on these resolutions. You can also nominate up to two alternates. And before the agenda, or sorry, when, at the time the agenda went out, I knew that Mayor Saragosa was interested in attending, and I hadn't quite heard back from the rest of the council, but I now have learned that Councilmember Borelli has an interest in, in attending virtually. So you have a few options on your staff report. I would just like to remind you that you could also nominate Councilmember Borelli to be the voting delegate with, with Mayor Saragosa as the alternate, or there's, there's a couple of options there for you to consider. So I will leave that with you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help answer them. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Any...
Vice Mayor, can I make a quick comment on that?
Yep.
Also, I failed to talk to Regina. Councilmember Taylor mentioned to me yesterday she's all over us. So I'll mention that for you, Councilmember. I apologize. Also, I just want to mention that the resolutions that will be before you for voting on, we just received those this week. We will bring those back to you in September so the whole council can see those and basically direct the voting delegate how they would like you to vote at the conference on those items. So those will come back to you at your next meeting for your review.
Thank you, Cleve.
Great. Thank, thank you, Cleve. Any questions for...
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say that it, this is a, I've done it before, and, and it's pretty much, we usually have the mayor do the voting and, you know, and then have one or two alternates go and sit on the main floor, which we're not going to do this.
I know.
But, and, and it's really short, but it's interesting, and...
I went last year for, for the, in Long Beach. And it would have been, it actually would have been in Long Beach again this year because the Sacramento Convention Center is still being worked on. So they were going to end up, but then COVID, of course, so now, now it's a virtual. I had to, I had to go anyways for clients on the virtual one.
I know. That was a great thing. That was great.
So it worked out, but...
But I think this is great that we, you know, we can all attend, and it's not going to cost anybody any money and, you know.
Yeah, I think it's fifty dollars for...
Well, fifty dollars, but I mean, we don't have to get a hotel or, you know, anything like that.
Yeah, that's right. We could sit in a hotel room and do our mutual.
Yeah, we could just feel like we're really doing it.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and open up for a public comment.
All right, public comment is now open for item twelve point four. Take Kirk Smith. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Mayor, I know it's quite a ways away, but do you and Councilmember Borelli have any idea the big issues you think will be raised at the League of Cities? Number one. And secondly, I was going to ask if you consider exploring with them other cities, the possibility of seeking recovery from PG&E for damages caused to businesses in Placerville and certainly other communities throughout the state for the power outages. It hurt a lot of businesses, as we all know, in this town. But then you have COVID nineteen, so it was a double whammy. That PG&E was negligent and that they failed to keep up their infrastructure because they put profits ahead of public needs is not my opinion. I'm paraphrasing the findings of judges in two court proceedings. One was criminal, where they were found guilty of manslaughter. So that negligence that brought about the fire is the same negligence that brought about the power outages, which we may face again. So it seems like it's worth exploring. The problem with doing it while bankruptcy was still pending is I understand that any new cases would take priority. And if you had sued previously, you'd be taking money away from the victims of paradise and the other fires. So it just seems like, and if that forces them into bankruptcy, so what? Smud wouldn't want to take them over. Why would they want to take over a badly maintained enterprise? But other communities would be willing to take them over at the right price. So I just wondered if you could, you and Ms. Borelli, whoever attends, would explore those options with other cities? Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Last call for item twelve point four. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I would, I would move that, I mean, I wouldn't move. I would nominate Mayor Saragosa as our delegate and Councilmember Borelli and Taylor as our alternates.
I'll second the motion for the nomination. Thank you. And I, it's my understanding that you'll probably have some of the statewide initiatives that the, the league may ask us to take a position on as, as a body. Maybe some of the things that, that come up. I'm not sure what the other ones may be at this point. But those are you generally, items that come up in, at least in an election year.
But you know what? I'd like to just say, too, that the league has been following this whole situation, and they've really done a lot, I think, in addressing some of the things that Mr. Smith said. And I mean, they, they really have been on top of it. So they're doing, you know, a lot of the courage.
They have. And I, yeah, and there has been a, a lot of discussion amongst municipalities, uh, in regards to lawsuits. And I, weren't we, I thought we were part of, uh, didn't we join some type of, uh, not lawsuit, but a group, um, last year? Um, I'm trying to remember that we.
That was the first set of power, we were the, what, Hill? We, we became an interested party to the proceedings before PUC.
Okay, that's what it was. Got it.
And we still are, I still do monitor those proceedings. I get notices of all the actions that are being taken there. Not in a real significance that, that I've seen that has come up, but I do monitor that.
Thank you. Okay, we have, uh, first and a second. Uh, any further comments? All right, seeing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Council member Acuna.
Aye.
Council member Borelli.
Aye.
Council member Taylor.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, all right, we will move on to item twelve point five. Uh, adopt a resolution approving the purchase of the replacement recording server, uh, from J E I in the amount of nine thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for the police department communication centers and approving the same, uh, amount of budget appropriation from the general fund contingency, uh, for on, uh, for seeing expenditures for, for said purchase. And I believe Commander Nida is with us this evening for this report.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Thank you. Uh, the police department is requesting approval for a replacement purchase of our server for the recording system for the nine-one-one communications center. The server is responsible for recording all of the nine-one-one calls, the emergency calls and all of our radio broad, broadcasts. So I can assure you it's a vital piece of equipment that we definitely need. Um, the police, all the communications in the nine-one-one center are recorded. And, um, the recorder was purchased in, I mean, correction, the server was purchased in twenty twelve. They normally have a lifespan of five years, so it's over its lifespan. We've been kind of limping it on, along last, uh, couple of years. And we've just been told by J E I, who is our company that we work with for the server, that, um, it's going to fail shortly if we don't replace it. So we've worked with them on the price and, um, they've given us a deal at nine thousand three hundred eighty-four and thirty-eight cents. Uh, J E I is a Cameron Park company that we've worked with for years. They're always responsive to our needs and come out and assist us with anything. Anytime we have problems with the recording system, um, they'll even notify us. They, they, uh, watch it themselves. So they notify us if they see problems on their end. So, um, we're just asking for the approval for this, uh, server that is, uh, required equipment for our nine-one-one communications center. Any questions?
Great. Thank you, Commander. Uh, any questions?
A quick question, Commander Nida. Good evening. Nice to see you this evening. Uh, how quickly would they be able to get this replaced?
Um, it would probably be within the month.
Great. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions?
So, um, Commander Nida, I noticed that they just give a one-year warranty. Um, is, that doesn't seem like much of a warranty. Can, can we buy an extension? You know, how you get all these notices about?
Right. I asked about that. And actually, the, the, um, it was the president of the company that I was working with. And he said, um, purchasing a warranty is actually, um, not advised by him because they're watching the equipment anyway. And the warranty covers, um, the limited equipment that's, um, listed on the quote, but they're watching it anyway. So if something goes wrong, we're going to have to pay for that little repair anyway. And the warranty, we'll be paying for the warranty. And then in addition, if something happens outs, outside, we will also have to pay for that as well. So it's like, um, not cost effective for us to get the warranty. Uh, yeah, I did check with that because I thought, why only one year? But he's, he advised against it. He said, you can, you're more than welcome to purchase it. But they're responsive. They don't overcharge us for things. They're a good company. Uh, we've been using them for years and, and they've been very helpful to us. And they actually have dropped the price significantly for us, um, knowing what we're going through right now.
Well, that's great. That, that's great. I appreciate that.
If I look at this, the hardware has a warranty of three years. The motherboard and CPU, the, uh, memory of the lifetime. So there's, it's, that's.
And the fact that this one's lasted ten, what, ten years?
Yeah.
Past is, you know.
This life, yeah.
I've never found that the warranty's, if it's a good server, they last.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will go ahead and open up for a public comment.
Public comment is now open for item twelve point five. No public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Some of approval of the item?
Thank you.
Second?
All right, we have a first and, and a second. Uh, any further comments? Seeing none. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Council member Acuna.
Aye.
Council member Borelli.
Aye.
Council member Taylor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Commander Nida.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
All right, uh, we're moving right along. Uh, item thirteen, council reports from other agency meetings. Uh, we'll start with the transit authorities.
No meeting.
No meeting. That makes it easy. Uh, Eldorado County Transportation Commission.
No meeting.
All right, uh, last go.
We'll meet tomorrow night.
Uh, Secog, uh, so we did have a meeting and it's, it's sort of been a very interesting, um, battle, if you will, that's been going on. And this goes back to, uh, the four county areas, um, the, the four county transportation region, uh, really having a disagreement over whether that, the money that they, uh, allocate should be formulaic or competitive. Uh, and they look to sort of us, EDCTC, as well as, uh, Placer that have, um, Placer's more formulaic than we are. We have just a very small percentage of funds that, uh, that we actually allocate on a formulaic basis, um, in Eldorado County. But that, that is a lively discussion. We had a, the vote actually failed, uh, to pass, um, our, um, our plan for this year. So it has to come back again in September because, uh, enough supervisors voted against it, uh, that there wasn't enough votes to pass. So it's, um, it's sort of an ongoing battle. It's an interesting from us because we're not, I mean, we're part of Secog, but we're not part of that four county transportation. So, um.
What were they voting on, too?
Uh, basically, it was the plan for funding going forward for next fiscal year. Uh, and it would have been allocated on, on that competitive basis.
On competitive, that's what I wondered. Was it competitive or?
Yes. And they had, they had done a couple of, um, kind of, you know, for the folks that wanted it to be more formulaic, they had pulled out, I think, like, three million dollars for some formulaic process of dividing it. But, I mean, a, a little small amount compared to the, the rest of the money that they get in. But, so it's, it's sort of an ongoing, um, you know, we'll see what comes out of it the next, the next round. Um, I mean, I will say, I mean, like, for EDCTC, I would say ninety-five percent of the money is probably competitive. There's only a really small dollar amount that's, that's, uh, formulaic. And part of the reason that, uh, Secog has sort of pushed back is, uh, the federal government has really frowned upon formulaic funding. And so it puts you at a potentially competitive disadvantage. So you have to kind of come up with other creative ways, if you're going to do formulaic, to say that without potentially, uh, having, uh, being penalized at the federal level and also potentially at the state level as well. So, um, I will, uh, keep reporting back on that, but it's, it's, uh, it, it's a big disagreement within Secog at this, at this moment. Uh, okay, uh, Placerville Fire State Council.
Um, I don't have a report tonight. They had a meeting Thursday and they didn't send me the, and I couldn't attend because we had a meeting here. Um, so I'll report on it next time.
Okay. Uh, requests for, uh, future agenda items, item fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I have one for this evening. Um, I've received a request to ask the city to look at, uh, opening or removing the fire gate that currently exists on Blue Bell Court, between Blue Bell Court and S D Way subdivision or the S D Estates, S D Way. There's a, uh, really fairly insignificant wrought iron, uh, geek there. There's a lot of controversy in the past.
Oh, yes.
Uh, concerns with the new neighborhood affecting the old neighborhood.
Right.
Now the concern is with the massive amount of Apple Hill traffic that those folks cannot get out to Pacific Street on Saturday, especially Sundays. And they're very concerned about being trapped up there. And so they have approached me. So I have just briefly mentioned this, I think, to Pierre Revois and Cleve. And it struck me that this afternoon, I probably better ask if it would, to be appropriate to bring it up here.
Is this something, I guess the question I would have, is this something that should be handled at a staff level? Or is this a council level issue?
We need to research and find out the history behind when that was, the gate was put in. And, uh, you know, I'm assuming it was part of a condition of approval. If it was, it will take council action, I'm assuming, to remove that condition or waive that and allow that gate to be opened up. So, uh, we will have our planning department review that and come back with a recommendation on the process if we do determine that we want to open it up. Obviously, some public curates to find out what the neighbors do think about it because there are still maybe some that are against opening it up too. So they, they want to weigh all of that information.
It was to satisfy neighbor, you know, the concerns, but like.
The Blue Bell neighbors were, yeah.
Yeah, but like Mark said, too, times have changed, you know, um, so it could be that it's time to look at it again.
Yeah, it's been a long time. They were, they were, there's, uh, three or four fire gates in the subdivisions from that same era.
Mm-hmm.
And they were all controversial.
It was fire, it was firegate haven.
Yeah, I, and I think that there's, uh, but as Patty said, things, times have changed.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you guys would support that, I'd appreciate it. Yeah. Any?
I would defer to status. Sounds like it's something that needs to come back to council this, okay.
Yeah, Will, I, I don't, don't know that we'll get it back at your next meeting, but we'll.
No, no, no. I don't know expectations of expediting it, but just to, because I absolutely think that, I'm sure there's folks out there that'll absolutely want it to stay or maybe even have a bigger gate put in.
Right, yeah, you never know.
There's obviously a huge amount of walk-around, drive-around traffic that's already taking place.
Exactly.
I quit by it a couple, few days ago. So, um, I'm sure there's two sides to the story.
All right, so all those in favor of bringing this back to council?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, council member Acuna. Any, any other requests? Okay, seeing none. Uh, move on to item fifteen, uh, city manager staff and staff report.
Um, I don't think we have anything tonight, Mayor. Uh, Dave, see, Dave, one thing you want to mention. Thank you for inviting me, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Uh, thank you, Mayor and ci- city council. Um, you may recall at your first meeting in June, you adopted a continuing budget appropriation due to the extreme budget impacts of COVID nineteen. Um, we would like to have another budget workshop, um, on Wednesday, September second at five o'clock. And I'd like to check with you to see if that would work with your schedules. Meeting would probably be an hour to two hours in duration. Um, it's primarily focused on our operating budget.
What, yeah, what time?
What date and time?
Uh, Wednesday, September second, starting at five o'clock.
I'm good.
Yeah, works for me.
Works for me.
Thank you.
Well, I've already got budget written on my calendar, so you must have proposed it sometime.
It was preliminary.
I will be in Montana, but I'll zoom in for it.
Awesome.
Wow. Can we go to Montana?
Can we all go and zoom?
We can do zoom from all from Montana, yeah.
Dude, you have to stay here.
Okay, yeah, that seems, that seems to work, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
And then I've got September eighth, I've got budget written.
Yeah, our, our original intention was to hold that budget workshop. We scheduled that previously. And then on the eighth, that's your first council meeting in September.
That's our, yeah.
If we're ready to, we will, uh, adopt, but likely will be the second meeting in September. But, uh, probably, probably during on the eighth day and then maybe the adoption on the twenty, uh, twenty-second.
Yes, that's exactly it. That's the plan.
Okay.
Thank you for, for bringing that back.
Yeah. Yes. Uh, all right, any, any other? Okay, all right, so move on to item sixteen, upcoming items. Uh, we have prostate cancer awareness proclamation, sexual assault proclamation, uh, the biennial conflict of interest code, Apple Hill traffic mitigation recommendations, um, Cedar Ravine sewer replacement project, uh, to name a few. And the Gold Book Park self-guided tour fee increase. Uh, so with that, um, wow, this, this feels a little odd.
Oh, my goodness.
Uh, a little bit past the eight o'clock, uh, I will adjourn, uh, tonight's meeting of the Placerville City Council. So thank you, everybody.
What a difference, huh?